Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
I'll call the meeting to order, please call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy is excused, Counselor Bender.
Yeah.
Counselor Sweeney.
Yeah.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah.
Counselor Missolia.
Yes.
Counselor Finsland.
Yes.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah.
Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck.
Yeah.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck.
Yeah.
Counselor Nowicki.
And Counselor Cadot.
Recognizing the quorum, I'll proceed and I'll ask for the consideration of the minutes of May 6, 2014.
(inaudible).
For the motion in multiple seconds, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
(inaudible).
Motion in second. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.1, Deputy City Clerk Burns is submitting the 2014-15 preliminary alcohol report. There are three parts to this report. Part one is the renewal applicants that are code compliant. Part two are the delinquent assessments and/or personal property. And part three are the special circumstances. A recommendation to approve part one and three and set a public hearing for part two would be in order.
Move. Heard the motion in second, approve part one and three and call for a public hearing on part two. Discussion? Counselor?
Chuck, out of all the bars that we've had here, do you have any that have stood out as far as problems?
Not as far as compliance with licensing and gaming machines and the like. If you're asking about...
Did we have any that are, that you would question as far as licenses getting renewed?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.2, Director of Parks Recreation Forestry Morgan is requesting permission to temporarily close Lake Superior Shore Road each season for the pullover project, while the pullover project is in process. And we have...
I'm sorry?
We have two people sign up to speak to that issue, too.
All second.
Okay.
Motion in second. Discussion?
Do you want to take the public first? Okay. Keith Allen.
Hi, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on this. I'd called most of the counselors last night. I have some concerns on this. I am not in favor of closing this road. Some history that I can recall to is that this group came to the county about three years ago, I believe it was, and asked that this project proceed with this piping pullover. And the county gave them permission to work on the access to that land that's out there in that area there. At that point in time, being chairman of the land committee, I'd asked if they wanted to, or they were going to close the road. I said I wasn't in favor of that, neither was the committee. So that was fine and then it went on and then they met, the group came back to the Wisconsin Point Management Committee about two months ago, I think it was, or three months ago. Gave a presentation and the same at the land committee. They talked about closing the road there. I wasn't in favor of closing the road on the Schaefer's Beach part of it. My suggestion as a committee member was to close the Dutchman's Creek road going out there, same, the same type of a closure that you have on Wisconsin Point from, I think it's 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM. And that was basically, their concern was to keep people out of that area, partying and wrecking the beach. And my concern is that if they, once they close the road, being on the county, the forestry department had closed roads in the years, years past temporarily, and now they're closed permanently. These are old logging roads where people accessed for years and years to hunt in certain areas. And that's my concern that eventually that this will be closed permanently. People say no, but I just have that fear. Once you start, it's a slippery slope. Some of this is a selfish reason. I live probably three miles from there. I go out there two to three times a week. Go to look in that vista over there, it's about a 30 or foot drop off down to the beach and it's the only view you have of the lake, where you can see two harbors from that area. And to close that off from May 1st to August 15th or the 1st, in my opinion, is, it'll just take away a lot of the enjoyment I have personally, and I don't know how many other people have. Oh, there were some other things I can't remember, but at least I'm opposed to this and I hope you look at this thoroughly if you have any questions. I know there's going to be a presentation of this from the St. Louis River people. And I think that, I don't even know if they've seen the piping pullover out there in the last three years. I think they saw one on Minnesota Point. My question is, if you're going to do this, how long are you going to do it for? They'll say until the project ends. I would like you to review it yearly or every other year. Don't leave it open. Who knows, it's going to be 10, 15 years? That's some of my concerns and thank you very much.
Say, Keith, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Yeah, and you had mentioned when you'd spoken to me about this, that this would also need to be passed by the county board? Isn't that what you'd said?
I believe so, either the county board and/or the land committee, I'm not sure if it's both.
Okay. And did you have a good announcement that has nothing to do with this to make, too?
Oh, I didn't, yeah, it was, what it had to do was with the Humane Society, last county board meeting, they took actions on the land committee's recommendations. If the land, if the Humane Society decides to get out of that building, them or us, the county, would sell that property and that money would be transferred into the operation in Superior here, the full amount, on top of the $410,000.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mary?
Counselor Bender, the Wisconsin Point Committee who has recommended this for your consideration would only like you to close the road provided the county agrees. And however the county decides if they're going to refer it to their land committee for consideration, whatever their process is, the point for you is that the committee only wants you to say yes if the county also says yes.
Keith Allen? Sorry. Tom, looking at Keith, Tom Bridge.
Mayor, members of the cabinet council, thanks. Do I need to introduce myself here? I remember the rules. You have an opportunity to make a decision here tonight that could possibly have national implications. Chris, that's going to speak after me, will have some, you know, facts and figures on the numbers, but, you know, if it were closed by ordinance, you'd have a set time period. So I don't really see that as too much of an issue, but the piping pulver is an endangered species with, I believe, only one nesting spot on the Great Lakes. So the biggest issue with this particular area is, as always has been with Wisconsin Point, that general area out there, is the abuse that takes place. And limiting access is, it's a pretty limited amount of access, really, that is being restricted. You know, maybe a quarter mile of beach that would be inaccessible. And still, it wouldn't be completely inaccessible, you could access it from Dutchman's by foot or from Wisconsin Point by foot. So you have about four miles of beach there and possibly a quarter mile of it that we would hope that this would place some restrictions on. The problems that have been seen out there, really, the birds need the beach to nest on and dogs and people don't really mix with that very well. So if the plan was successful, and I would also add that this recommendation is consistent with the Wisconsin Point implementation plan that went through the Northwest Regional Planning Commission process and was approved by the city council and the county board. So it's not inconsistent with what, with what that plan states at all. So I hope you move forward with this. If it's successful, it would have national implications for that bird and for the city of Superior, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Chris Eilers with the St. Louis River Alliance and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit here. We've been working on this project for, this is our third year now, and since we first presented this to the county for road closure, possible road closure, or to see what we can do to help protect the area a little bit, we've been collecting data with extensive monitoring every single day throughout nesting season, which goes from about May 1st until around June 15th or so. So I'm just going to read just a little bit. I have some, I have some data. We do see piping pulver out there every year. We have, we have documented and has been reported to the US Fish and Wildlife Service. Last year, there was only one reported, but the year before, there was three right on Schaefer Beach. And so we also have other birders who have reported that they do see them every single year. They do stay, they do not stay to nest and that's, that is the issue. In the Great Lakes, there is less than 70 nesting pairs and they are mostly in sleeping bear dunes. There is also about six or seven nesting pair on Long Island. So in all of Wisconsin, there's seven nesting pairs. There is none in the Twin Ports. There hasn't been any here nesting since the 80s. The US Fish and Wildlife Service has deemed this a very high priority. It's a critically endangered species, very close to extinction. And Superior is a bird city. And so, you know, the reason why, why they're, we're working on this here is because of the beautiful natural habitat that they need to nest, which is wide sandy beaches and far enough away from a tree line. And so the funds for the US Fish and Wildlife Service have been going towards restoration in different areas on this and they have, officials have selected Schaefer Beach as one of the best viable beaches, habitat for the piping pulver. They're very vulnerable to disturbances and threats and we do collect data. So our data shows that 80% of the time that we're out monitoring, there is, there are disturbances, which means, you know, there's bonfires, there's firecrackers, there's massive amounts of garbage that we pick up. And they're getting down there via mostly Dutchman's Creek, but not always, you know, in that parking lot there. So, you know, closing the beach off at night may help a little bit, but it doesn't, it doesn't really stop the, you know, the amount of traffic that gets back there. And because we do realize that this is, this is an area that's of interest to a lot of people who use it for whatever reasons, for legal purposes also, we would, I checked with the US Fish and Wildlife Services again, and we would request this area to be closed, the road to be closed from April 15th until June 15th. That is nesting season. It would be contingent on whether there is a nest or not, and I don't know how you need to write the ordinance for that, but it would be, if there is a nest, it would need to extend to August 15th. But if there is not a nest, it would be till June 15th. We want the public to be able to use the beaches and we feel like there's a way that we can do this that works for everybody. There is, there is some sacrifices involved, however, you know. So in closing, we are asking for restricted access during nesting season because of the great threat and the deterrent for the nesting piping pulver. We would ask that the road be closed from April 15th until June 15th and would be extended only if there is a nest found until August 15th. Schaefer Beach is, has been designated by US Fish and Wildlife Service and the DNR as critical habitat and it's the best habitat for the rare shorebird. We hope to give the advantage of protection to a bird that has been close to extinction. Wisconsin Point provides an important link to the success of the Great Lakes piping pulver and also provides the public with a rare educational opportunity. And like, like he said, this is of national significance and so this is a, this is a kind of a really good thing for the city of Superior also. Is there questions?
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just one question. In the picture that you sent us, there's all these red squares on a particular picture we received. What are those squares, what are they referenced to? I don't know if you're familiar with what we got?
Oh, there's the map there?
The map, yes.
Those are parcels.
Those are parcels?
Mike, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. And so the area that we're looking at is where those parcels are not, in the center of the picture?
Well, the area that we're proposing to close, provided the county agrees, is the access from Moccasin Mike Road onto Lake Shore Road, which leads directly to a county-owned property known as Schaefer's Beach. We're not proposing to close Dutchman's Creek.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sweeney?
It would seem to me to be prudent to at least review this on an annual basis. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. That would be fine.
And then how many years do you need where there will be no nesting? You fill in that blank before you're pretty sure there isn't going to be nesting in that area?
Well, I don't think that I can give you a number on that because that would be up to US Fish and Wildlife Services, but however, if you do write this as an ordinance, provide, no?
This coming forward as a matter of policy, Chris, not an ordinance.
Oh, got you, okay. Policy, they could be reviewed on a yearly basis, so that question would be addressed at that time, I think.
But based on your experience, what would you, if there was nothing there for three years, would you, there must be diminishing effect after not there in three, they're pretty sure they're not going to be there in four. Is that fair to say?
No, actually, it's not because the, the way it works is, from my understanding, is that the nesting grounds that is viable, that they are nesting on, Long Island, as that, as that fills out, as it has been in the last few years, they will actually look for other habitat, so they will keep coming this way.
Kind of a strange observation, but years ago, when we developed Barker's Island, we literally picked up a wildlife refuge and put it on the other side of the bay and created a wildlife refuge there. Could these birds be moved?
The St. Louis River Alliance has permission from the DNR to use that property as well, Counselor, for their project. So they're actively trying to lure the birds to two properties, the one you just referenced and this other one known as Schaefer's Beach.
Correct. The most viable spot is Schaefer Beach, though. It's a lot wider and provides the wave action that the birds are looking for. So according to US Fish and Wildlife Services, that is the most viable, but we are monitoring both of those areas. That one that you mentioned, we do have permission to work with that also.
So are we prematurely proposing to close the road if we're looking at another site?
No, because we can't make them go to one or the other. We can't, they can't be moved, they pick where they want to go. And so we have to provide them with safe, with safe places in both areas. So right now, US Fish and Wildlife Services has made that Schaefer's Beach a priority. That's where the money's being spent. And that, you know, working with the county on the conservation easement there, that has been the most viable spot there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? You have a motion in second? I'm sorry, Counselor?
One more question. Mary, I'll ask you the map question here. Now, looking at the map, there's an arrow on the map, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just that portion from the arrow toward the lake?
Yeah, the arrow is pointing to the entrance to Lake Shore Road.
Okay.
Yep, so it's just that road.
Okay.
That would be closed.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Also, would it be possible to offer a friendly amendment, asking that if this be brought forward as a matter of policy, follow up with Counselor Sweeney has said that this be reviewed on a year-to-year basis?
Let me finish with the discussion first. Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck?
That's what I was going to do. I was going to request to amend the motion, that it be reviewed on a yearly basis.
Counselor Sweeney? Motion is amended to approve with review on a yearly basis. They will vote on the amendment first. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The motions before you for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I believe Ms. Eilers asked if the council would consider an earlier closure date than May 1, per US Fish and Wildlife recommendations?
Yes.
So you just passed the dates that I sent you from the committee, but I guess the question is, are you willing to consider an earlier date on the front end?
And it would be an earlier closure date, too. I mean, an earlier opening date, also. I mean, it only would go through June 15th unless there is a nest.
So she's going to let me know if there's a nest. If there's no nest, we open the road.
I don't see that would be a problem. Who goes down there in April, anyway? You know what I mean?
Right, exactly.
That's Lake Superior.
Right, and that was US Fish and Wildlife Services. I don't know if they've visited here lately, but...
Need a motion, Mayor, to, for the earlier date.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Heard the motion in second and the date is April 1st?
April 15.
April 15. April what?
April 15 to June 15, and if there is no nest, the road reopens on June 15.
So I'd agree with both the motion and the second.
Aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Item 7.3, Planning Director Cirque is recommending to award the third and fourth floor window repairs at Farrelawn Mansion to Old World Windows, Duluth, Minnesota, for $58,776.
Heard a motion in multiple seconds for approval. Discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
I just want to know if there's more than one bid on that?
No, there was only the one bid. I think the, part of the reason might have been because of the standards of the Preservation Historical Society puts on and local firm, or businesses were contacted, but we just received the one.
So we chose the one to get the pressure?
No, we reached out to local businesses.
Oh, and they're the only one?
But they were the only ones who submitted.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I guess my question, is this for a full replacement? I've seen some different scenarios in there, but is this going to be for full replacement at the $58,000?
It's actually for the repairs.
Just repairs?
Yep.
Okay, is there a guarantee going to be on those repairs then, versus replacement?
All of the work is guaranteed for at least two years.
Two years?
Potentially more. There is someone here from Old World Windows if you'd like to speak to them directly.
Sure, sure, that'd be great. Yes.
Let's name, I'm Paul Freeze.
Well, could you come up here, please? Thank you.
My name's Paul Freeze and I'm the president of Old World Windows. Yeah, our work, we could give you a 10-year guarantee on it, that's typical of replacement windows. And I would expect them to last decades when it comes right down to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Motions before you, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.4, item 7.4, Planning Director Cirque is recommending to approve Dave Olson's request to purchase city-owned property at 1106 North Ace Street for $750.
Heard the motion in second to approve. Discussion? Counselor Dahlbeck?
I was wondering, on the other side, you have a other lot next to it, Irene Hilstrum. Was she notified that this property is up for a bid?
I would, Counselor, I mean, Director Cirque isn't here, but I do believe he notifies adjoining adjacent properties.
Okay.
When a consideration like this is before.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.5, Assistant Public Works Director Janego is submitting the 2014 blacktop mix proposals.
Heard a motion in second. Counselor Dahlbeck?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
7.6, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to award Phase III final closure construction at Moccasin Mike Landfill to specialty contracting and waste management for the amount of $1,499,767.
Heard a motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
7.7, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to award the East Fifth Street reconstruction project to the lowest bidder, James Peterson Sons, Inc., for the amount of $2,252,000.
Oh, it was the one that was on top of the packet and, okay. Never mind.
Next time, Rachel.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is recommending approval to award the classification and compensation study for the city of Superior to Carlson Detman Consulting of Middleton, Wisconsin, in the amount of $33,000 plus travel expenses.
Motion approved.
Second?
Heard a motion in second. Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bender.
Yes, I need to move it over like this. Anyway, you know, reading all this information as far as this goes, very carefully, a decent study on this, and of course, Carlson Detman is the gold standard, you know, as far as wage and compensation studies go, they check the ages, they have years of service, they analyze the benefits package and compare with similar sized cities in Wisconsin. And just the shortlist that came up on a couple pages on the internet were cities and counties that have used them are Dodge City, Fort Atkinson, Fond du Lac, Wapaka County, Stevens Point, Chano, Sawyer County, Douglas County, Wood County, O'Connell County, Kewanee County, Jefferson County, River Falls, Oshkosh, Pittsburgh, Barron County, Porch County, and I won't read the other 17 that are on here. However, as I brought up last week when we had met about this, that there was a similar study that was, well, not a similar, there was another study done by Jeff Thompson. And that one was for internal use. But one thing that I noticed when I read over all of these, and of course, they're all available on the internet, too, is we could just take five cities that are similar size, use their comparisons.
Counselor Olson?
I'm going to be fairly vocal about this because with what we have going on in this city, we had an article in the paper explaining the woes that we have in this city. We have a landfill project right now that has not been resolved and we're working on that. Everybody's working hard on it. I don't understand why we have to reach out to a company to figure out what we should be doing in this city and to pay, to pay $30,000 of our taxpayer dollars to a company that hasn't, and I've looked this over, that hasn't given us any information more than they're available to handle appeals for a fee. So the $30,000 is an initial cost. We have no idea what the, or, you know, the original cost, the beginning cost in five installments is $6,000. What are the fees? I've got information that said Carlson Detman was going to give us 10 free appeals. Well, if we're going to get 10 free appeals, I'm going to say there's going to be more along the way. That's, that's not good business on their part to just give away 10 free appeals. Based on the price that I've got here of $250,000, that's $2,500,000, so why don't they knock that off the 30,000 right off the bat if that's the route that they choose to go? And Kami, thank you for this and Mayor for the information here on the, the information that I passed out the other day, but my concern on this is, and I'm sure that it won't happen, and I guess I don't even know if it would be legal, but what if the study came back and said that the people in Phase 1 were overpaid last year? And I brought this up in the retreat. So are we going to have a Phase 3 to correct any problems that we had in Phase 1 last year? So to pay $30,000 and not know what the appeals are going to be, not knowing that if they're going to give us 10 free appeals, what the cost will be, other than, and the other thing is plus travel expenses. We looked at the travel expenses the other day and they seem minimal, but somebody that travels a lot, those are hidden costs. So I just, I, there's no way I can support this, that we're going to spend $30,000 of our taxpayer dollars out of the general fund, that obviously there's, it's, it's been, there's money for it in the 2014 budget, but moving forward, it doesn't make, it's not good business sense to me. it, it doesn't make, it's not good business sense to me.
Further discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
I take somewhat the opposite view, but my concern is, is point number six in their eight points. It's the market data collection and analysis. That's the key to my, how they come up with, what figures they come up with. In other words, are they gonna use size of cities? Population of cities? Location of cities within the whole state of Wisconsin? What percent is gonna be in, in the profit, for-profit world? Any non, I don't know if there'll be any nonprofits. It's the mix that determines the figures that concerns me. And in reading through this, and I read, read the one, um, city that they gave mention of, Manitowoc, I think it was, they went to a two-phase system of analysis. They came up with a graded step system. I figured that, I, that must be for seniority, and then they somehow combined that with a, uh, production. Okay, if you produce, you get more money. I don't know how that worked exactly, but those are some questions. I think they, at least for me, I've gotta have a clear answer, and I've got a clear answer to know who they're putting into this mix to determine what the figures will be. I assume they're gonna put all fringe benefits in there. I, I think that goes in the package. I, I read that. Okay, but that's the big, number six is the big one for me. I, I need to get some clarif, I'm in favor, but I need clarification, and I think this committee would do well to make sure that we get those, that down before we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dennis Delbeck?
Well, I, I guess my feelings on this is that if we're gonna have this study done, we could do it ourselves, but then would we get a, uh, a neutral answer? I think by going outside, you're having a neutral parties come in, bake the evaluations, and I think that's the way we should be doing it.
Thank you. I might just add a little bit if I, Counselor Herrick, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna mention, uh, some of the things I had with, you know, with what I read in that information too was, um, again, additional cost of variables. I mean, what are they gonna charge us, you know, for the, uh, for the, the appeals? And I think with appeals, I mean, how's that work? I mean, I mean, I read how they do it, but I guess my question is there, is it subjective per individual? So I, I'm ki, I'm kinda confused in that area.
We, we had some discussion internally about the appeal process, um, and, uh, knowing how keenly interested the council is in this issue as we are, as I am, we're very, I'm very adaptable to regarding, uh, to, with regard to how the appeals would work, and, um, my understanding is that if, if there's an appeal, it would go back for review and further, further evaluation comparison that would probably be brought back to, um, human resources, and to, to be fully interactive, I would, I would think that the HRC committee would also want to have a play and a part and a role in the, um, the, the finalization of the, the appeal itself by individuals or classifications. So I, I think that the council would want that, and I would expect that to be a part of that appeal process, so that, um, it isn't just moved through and then asked for, um, perfection of recommendation by the council without council, or at least HRC being involved in it. I, I just wanna say that, that this, this, as you know, is a very arduous, um, matter before us, and, and, like you, I'm very interested and concerned in making sure that the people that work, work for the city are treated as fairly and as best as possible, and I think we all would agree that, um, for a period of time at least, and partially and maybe mostly, due to Act 10, uh, that, that parity and that fairness has been absent to some degree. And that was the reason for, I guess, my, um, and our proposal on a Phase 1, Phase 2, knowing full well that implementing everything at all in one phase may be very difficult, but also to give a fair review of time and, and participation. It was talked about internal analyses with Jeff Thompson, who I have high, high respect for, high regard for. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, Mr. Thompson's company didn't have the time to commit at this point, he did not bid on this, am I correct? Because of the nature of the, uh, the, um, the clientele that he has before him at this juncture, and I think continually because, uh, he's been busy through the process that we had him engaged before. So, um, I, you know, are we wedded to a process? I don't think we are. I do believe though that, that, um, it's important to have an outside independent view in, uh, looking at this, similar to, uh, any number of items that we've had in the past. Example being, most recently was the, as Counselor Molson, you said, the landfill. We did an internal review of, of what the issues were and the potential solutions of the landfill, and it caused, and properly so, caused a lot of discussion and, and, um, different points of view with regard to that, and that's why we decided to go outside for independent professional deep review. If for nothing else, for validation or refinement of what we discovered, uh, as to what potential problems are, the fact that it's upside down, and, um, what the potential solutions might be. And likewise here, um, I know there was, um, some unhappiness with regard to Phase 1, uh, and, uh, I guess I'll take responsibility for that too, but I think that it's, we, regardless of how we get there, I think we all have to be on the same page, whatever page that is, to make sure that we have independent, um, analyses with regard to being fair again, with regard to renumeration and classification. One of the main rea, I don't hate to take so much time, but one of the main reasons that interested me in this is that, when I came on board here and having worked with, with the departments and interfacing with many employees, what I discovered was, maybe latently, I don't know, what I discovered was that, uh, over the years, recent years maybe, the workforce in the community has, I would say drastically been reduced, whereby classifications in different positions and departments and have had to do more, and I, it's a trite statement, more with less, in this case with less people. And pulling the rope, getting the job done, and by golly, um, I think they've done a wonderful job with, uh, resources that have been not available to them. And in that, um, I saw where I believe I've seen classifications haven't matched what the responsibilities might have been with the resp, with the level of responsibilities that they have, and the renumeration hasn't matched that particular, um, issue. So that was why, um, I was very adamant, as many of you were and are, with regard to taking a very solid view at how we're going to, uh, shall I say, treat our people. So whatever result we, or however we get there, the result is what's important. Counselor Dennis Delbeck?
I just wanna say, uh, Mayor, this is nothing new to Superior. I worked for the city for decades, and this was nothing new. This happened quite often, where they come in, get an outside, independent, uh, company to come in and evaluate the workers. It, it gives us the opportunity to get our employees, uh, evaluated, evaluated by neutral eyes, and I think that's what we want. We wanna know, how do we compare to other communities?
Counselor Sweeney?
Again, on, on the proposal to conduct classification and compensation study, number eight, it says provide a cost overview of the city's benefit program, recommending changes in, that would benefit the city, but it may well benefit the city, but it's not market-driven. So I, we've got some things that don't match here that they're willing to do, it seems to me. Are we, and again, I'm, I can't emphasize enough, what is the total, uh, unit that they're gonna compare us to? That's, to me, to be the absolute key, and so before we, whoever's on this committee, I, I think that's gotta be absolutely debated and decided, and spend some time and make sure that we got the right mixture of outside, and in, and I would assume we're gonna take some cities, and we're gonna take some, they said we're gonna take them all, but depends on how you do that. That's a critical piece.
Let me ask a question of Human Resource Director. Um, with what we've heard here tonight, would it be possible to, um, consult with this particular firm to see if some of the questions that have been asked, I think in particular by Counselor Sweeney and Counselor Olson, I forget, could be responded to in time for the June 3rd council meeting for, uh, if further clarification of that's required and necessary?
I can possibly try to answer, uh, some of those questions from just things that I learned through doing the reference checks with other cities.
Sure, go ahead. Thank you.
Counselor Sweeney, your, your question regarding the market that they would use. I recall in at least a couple occasions in speaking with some other cities where they talked about being involved in, very involved in that process, um, where the Carlson Detman would make a recommendation, and they would either agree or disagree, and, and have a conversation about it, and I can't recall exactly which city it was, but there was one where they had a, um, a larger city right next to them that wasn't being included, and the city said, "Well, they are our competitors. We're competing for employees with that city. We think that they need to be included," and Carlson Detman agreed and included them in that analysis. Um, I recall another example of, um, a private sector, uh, company being asked, or, they proposed utilizing and, and, uh, can't remember, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't Menards, but it was a, a firm like Menards comparing to the, uh, labor force, and the city, uh, did not agree that that was, um, a, a good comparable, and so they agreed they wouldn't utilize that particular, uh, organization. So there was some discussions back and forth on what was gonna be the market, um, for the comparisons with those cities. So that part of it, I am aware, um, that's about as much, you know, I can share that part with you. Regarding the expenses, I, I, I don't know exactly what the expenses are. The, I believe in their proposal, they had estimated they would travel here three, three times. Trying to recall after seeing all of them. Um, so that's three, three trips to Superior. I did talk with Douglas County yesterday, I believe, uh, talked with, um, Andy Lee Shack, and asked him how much their appeals cost, a, and he did tell me that their cost was $5,000 to do their appeals. But they are done, and the appeals process was another process that was, is, is something that Carlson Detman will work with, um, the administration on how, how it is to be done, and in what order, and who, who sees what. For the county, I, I believe what happened is if an employee filed an appeal, and the county did not restrict who could file appeals, anybody could appeal for, for any reason. The, the employee filed the appeal, the supervisor, the, and, and administration reviewed the appeal to make sure that all the information was accurate, forwarded the appeal to Carlson Detman. They made a recommendation back to county administration of whether to approve the appeal, deny the appeal, and then it was county administration's final decision on whether that appeal was, um, upheld or denied. I don't know if any, if that helps at all. As far as Mayor, as far as, um, holding the bid award to the next council meeting, what that does is it delays already, puts a delay in your process that's already a tight timeframe, but certainly, when I, when I talked to, uh, Mr. Carlson today, he did offer to do that if, if that was necessary, but then that already puts us over the budget timeline or deadline.
I should explain that, uh, timeline. I asked to have a fairly tight timeline on this because of the nature of getting the, all the information back to council and, and time for fall and other discussions. Counselor Finnsland?
Would Carlson Detlin, Detman include the Duluth metropolitan area as part of their study? And if not, why wouldn't they, uh, since that's our economic area? I can explain that if you need further reasoning.
I, I don't know, again, I think they work with the, the administration on what will be the comparables, and speaking with, uh, Douglas County, um, Andy Leeshack did tell me that they used Carlton County and St. Louis County in their set, data set.
Counselor Dennis Delbeck?
Kami, um, during negotiations with new comparables, you use a certain set of cities throughout Wisconsin. Were they using those same cities? Or would they be looking at northwestern Wisconsin as comparable?
Again, I believe that would be, that would be something they would discuss with, uh, the administration on if they preferred to utilize the same cities, or if they wanted Carl's, if the city wanted Carlson Detman to propose some cities.
'Cause I mean, we have some cities down in the southern part of, is it Janesville one of our comparables?
Uh-uh. Wonder if I have them. Um, I, like, uh, Beloit is probably the bigger one.
That's what I was thinking of.
Fond du Lac, Eau Claire, Manitowoc, Marshfield, Stevens Point, Wassa. I think those, those are the ones I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, so there's some set of cities that they use for negotiations that could possibly use? Okay, thank you.
Did I, I think I read this, and I think what you're telling me is what I read, but just wanna make clear. They will come to this group, and they will say, "Here are our comparables," and this group will then vote on it or not, or throw out A and put in Duluth, for example, if that's not in. Is that the way that it's going to go?
That's my understanding, that they don't come in and say, "These are your comparables." It's more of a discussion.
Because to use southeastern Wisconsin is not a comparable to me, as opposed to some closer cities, so. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Olson?
Um, Mayor, I, I like your idea of holding off a little bit. I think everybody knows the complexity of all this, and, and we should be prepared to get the informa, that's given to us and act on it accordingly. My only concern is that, um, when, Jack, you mentioned that southeastern, every city's gonna be different as to, and so is the county compared to the city. How many employees do we have in public works? How many employees do we have in clerical? Uh, what are the duties? There's more snow removal up here. Uh, we've got a brand-new Tower Avenue that is unique in how the public works is doing this. As far as Menards, they, they would have been fools to put that in that's private. So we're looking at a public entity here, a municipality. Um, I still don't, I, I like the Mayor's idea of holding off until we get more, you know, more information, because what are the parameters that they're going by? And if it does include Duluth, um, you know, you may find out that that's not right either, but I, I still stick to my guns that the $30,000 is gonna be done on speculation. We, we don't, the only thing I can see in front of me, and these iPads really screw me up, but, um, is that they will be $250 per job evaluation over the 91 classification evaluations. So, and then it says what, what the fee will actually cost here in these eight items, but I don't have anywhere here as to the comparables, as to the workforce, the amount of people. The Act 10, uh, thing is obviously an issue because when it gets back to the appeals, who on the, which unions are still unions, whether you wanna call them a union or not? Who's gonna be in charge of your public works departments? Are we still using a labor management? Is the appeal's gonna go directly through the HRC, you know, and, and if that's the way it will be, that's, that's fine, if that's the way we have to do it. But I don't see anything in front of me that's gonna tell me at the end of the day, when whoever cuts the check, that that's gonna be the end of it. Based on $5,000 that the county did, uh, if that was 250, that's, uh, 20 appeals. So back to my early comment, if they're giving us 10 free appeals, i, if I was a bid-
So, back to my earlier comment, if they're giving us ten free appeals, if I was in business, if I knew I was gonna give away ten free things, I need to get fifteen in order for me to make any money. So, I, I agree with the Mayor that I think we should, if possible, if it's an amendment to the motion here on this issue, that we hold this off and get some more information.
Table it.
Pardon?
Table it to the light.
Or if we can table and get more information.
Make that motion.
We've got a motion on the floor, though.
There is a motion on the floor to adopt or pass, so we'll take that first. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I would make, change my motion to table it.
The motion's gotta fail first, don't it?
Okay.
Asking for a motion to adopt this. I think, according to Robert's rule, does a motion to table take precedence over a-
It does.
Okay, I'll make a move to table until the next meeting.
Second.
Motion a second to table until the first Tuesday, the third of June. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item eight point two, Mayor Hagan has recommended the following committee appointments, Donald Numi to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors, Ed Anderson to the Metropolitan Interstate Commission, and Steve Marshall to the Civil Service Commission.
Motion a second, Counselor Olson.
Just for clarity, it's the Metropolitan Interstate Council.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item eleven point one is an ordinance introduced by myself, amending section forty-six dash six, relocating districts one and three polling sites from the airport to the Superior Middle School.
Heard the motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Eleven point two is an ordinance introduced at the request of the Building Inspection Division of Public Works, amending chapter one oh five, creating, or one oh four, creating one oh four dash one ninety-one, application for appeal.
Heard the motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Eleven point three, an ord, an ordinance introduced at the request of the Building Inspection Division of Public Works Department, amending chapter thirty-four, creating section thirty-four dash twenty, means of appeal.
Heard the motion, multiple seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Heard the motion, a second, we stand adjourned.